Please rise for the pledge.
Public Weekend at Camp Conrad Weiser.
The United States of America is a republic which stands one nation under God invisible with whatever legal justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting, March 6, 2022. This meeting.
It's April.
It's April. There we go. Thank you. It's April 6. I appreciate that. Meeting is held live and on Zoom. Tonight, the Planning Commission will hear the presentation from the Gray Farm property. The Planning Commission will discuss at that time. After we have discussed it, we'll open discussion up to the audience. After that, we will open it up to Zoom. The chat box will be disabled. To raise your hand, hit the reaction button on your computer and click Raise Hand accordingly. And we will call on your computer and Zoom and answer your questions. So with that, I'd like to.
Minutes then.
Open the meeting. The minutes? Yep. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the March 2, 2022 meeting?
Yes, I've read the minutes and recommended we approve them as written.
I have a motion.
A second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. All right. And we have the Gray Farm. 1025 Worthington Road Preliminary Land Development Plan. Who do we have presenting tonight?
Good evening, Allison Zarro. On behalf of the Gray Farm applicant, we're here this evening, as we mentioned about the Gray Farm. We have a pending preliminary land development plan. We've been before you several times, including last month, to give you an update. Since that time, we have received our approval letter of the remedial remedial investigation report cleanup plan from DEP that approval was issued on March 10. So I don't know if everybody has seen a copy of that. If you have not, I do have copies of it.
If you have a copy, I'll take one.
Okay, sure.
I saw it online. If you made the copies, I'll take them. And this is the approval of the plan?
Yeah, so the plan, which means at this point, the plan as presented to DEP, which has remediation measures in it, including the soil remediation that we've discussed previously with the Planning Commission, is approved by DEP and the protocol related to that to go forward and do the plan. So, so we are, so we had at the last meeting, we had submitted a response letter prior to the last meeting even to your engineer just based on the actual plan comments and your engineer had issued a review letter dated February 26, 2022. One of the things that we had also submitted based on our prior discussions and had for the last meeting was the remediation and site development plan, sort of the step sequence of site activity, which corresponds with the report that was just approved. And that sequence has a list of steps and estimated timeframes. There are nine total. It's dated February 23, 2022. In your engineer's review letter, at his very last comment on page 10, which was the only new comment in the review letter, he asked for clarification as it relates to the sequence specifically number seven. And that was where we talked about, if you recall, we've talked about the fact that the very first thing that would happen on the site is the soil removal and remediation before site improvements would begin. And he did ask for clarification because we have number seven continuation of site development in accordance with the final plans after that, you know, site work is done for the actual cleanup. And so he was asking for clarification and to, to be clear, what number seven would say would then be there would be no permanent above-ground improvements such as curb road or other features that could not easily be restabilized and returned to natural open space if an act two approval were not granted by DEP. Meaning, once we do the work, as we discussed before, there's a report that's done. That report is then submitted to DEP and DP, you know, says, yes, you're approved. Here's your act two, or no, you have to do something else. So, so we did want to clarify that for the Planning Commission. As we've also previously discussed, we are requesting the partial modification with respect to the sections related to the actual sequence of this so that we would be able to do it in order of land development. And other than that, everything in the review letter is a welcome fly. So I'm happy to answer questions on that before. I know I've been talking a lot.
You explain. Hopefully it'll make it clear. I feel to me that the biggest thing is right there that needs to be in bold, that nothing's going to happen until you get the final DEP cleanup. Nothing above ground.
Yes.
Right.
And just this is right. So the way it works is, and we would take care of this through a note in the plan. So it would be right there on the plan, recorded plan set. This, we can incorporate that well, we sent previously as a sequence of events, just like we would with an NPDS permit where lists, you know, 30 or 40 steps in sequence of construction. We would do that. And the idea is that we would just move forward with the earth moving and bike organ things that we could do underground. By then, in 90 days of the submission of the final report, we would have the act two release coming, most the administrator at that.
Okay. Question now, I hope you guys, let's say you start and you start putting pipes in the ground, which you're allowed to do. And they come back and say, you got to do something else. That's on you. Okay.
And you know, as you know, when we record the plans, we'll have financial security for all of these site developments. So there'll be a lot of, there'll be a file posted with full site development cost, which only a fraction of it would be done by the time. And hopefully, hopefully we don't get that. But in a very unlikely event that we do, you know, it's, it's covered with the bond and obviously that would be honest. Yeah, that's our, that's our risk.
The other thing that Denny just reminded me of while you were talking and you mentioned NPDS permit, we actually have now received our NPDS permit as well since we were last here. Yeah.
Between the, between the last meeting and this meeting, we, you know, got all these things buttoned up. So we do have our NPDS.
While I'm coming up with the questions, the other thing is, I know there's been a lot of concern in the neighborhood about the dust when everything's being cleaned up. So there will be inspectors keeping an eye on all that, correct?
We have our third-party environmental consultants will be on hand during this entire process because they will need to direct our contractors as the soil thing moves to get to a point where we can test it and they can certify that we've, we've gotten it all out. So yes, that's absolutely correct.
Okay. Correct. Just to clarify what Dennis is asking though, will you use dust suppression and stuff like that to control odors, to control the dust nuisance?
Yeah, we'll use whatever practices our, our, you know, EP approval requires and otherwise to make sure.
That's what you're asking, right, Dennis?
Yep.
Okay.
Just sit there.
I have a question from my own understanding. It's not related to the cleanup part. So I can, I can hold off if you want, or I can ask it. It's more just, I was driving down Worthington Road and I saw the property. I kind of looked at it and definitely, we definitely want to get that developed, right? It's, it's sort of an eyesore, but I noticed there were some structures in the back. So are those people, are there, are there people actually living there today?
There were, it was being rented out. To my knowledge, those, the last tenant there. There's, there's. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. There's one in the double line.
Okay. And so what's the plan? Like if you guys are going to start.
It'll be Denver. That building will be Denver.
Okay. So there, there's a plan for them to be moved out and all that kind of stuff. Or is there, okay. It was just, I was more curious.
Not a month, the month that's released that has the 30 days.
Okay. Right. And he's aware of this is coming up and okay.
The house would be one of the first things that gets done when it's part of this.
That's right. I also noticed the land is not flat, right? We're looking at black and white photos. It looks flat, but there's a pretty good grade on one chunk of it. I think it's probably the right side of the pipeline. Is that, would that be right? So is it, is, are you, is it, is the, is the end result still going to have sort of that hillish grade there? There's going to be houses that are going to be up higher than the others?
Yeah. It follows, it follows the topo.
Okay. I mean, I would, that would be a really difficult task because it's, it's a pretty good slope up.
It's going to be a very nice, I think it's going to be very nice to have that topo.
I, I, I might, I might say, I just meant, we're just more trying to understand what the end result's going to look like.
There'll be obviously some, some regrading to balance the site, but as a whole, that topo will make it consistent.
Talking about the pipeline, has that been investigated as to height and all that and how deep in the ground? And have you contacted and got letters from the pipeline company saying you can do all this?
We did surveys out there. We tested to get the depths and we've been in contact with the pipeline to appropriate area to get that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question just regarding, and I'm new to the commission. So I know this has been on the board for almost two years, so two, since 2020. Just as far as communication to surrounding neighborhoods and things like that, there was questions about, you know, health concerns, whether founded or not. What kind of communications is, as a developer, are you committed to doing or have been doing to the surrounding neighborhoods to let them understand, you know, the mitigation efforts, what you're, you know, how you're working with the DEP, the controls that you're putting in place, what kind of communication would be?
What was the communication we do? Obviously, so through the township and township by the post of website, believing that we have provided them and we provide them that they can receive. So there's been access to the township and the residents that have been typically open. In terms of, you know, if seed ongoing, obviously we will coordinate with township and let them know when we intend to start. The, you know, daily or whatever weekly will be in consultation with them. And so they'll be able to.
So just directly through the township, not directly to any of the neighboring, like through Rhonda with access road is like no communication to them, but through the township to them.
In my experience doing this, the best way to communicate is directly with township so that there isn't wrong dissemination and information. If one neighbor, I say one thing, one neighbor misinterprets to another, then you have, then they get overwhelmed.
Sure.
My, my experience.
One point of contact. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
The other thing I'll mention is during the process, we did need to do some well testing in various locations and there were property owners notified at that time.
Okay.
About a year ago.
The groundwater is being monitored also?
It is currently, it has been monitored for the last several decades.
Okay.
Allison referring to as part of the DEP approval process, we put another well or the upward road just to further demonstrate that that the groundwater hasn't, hasn't moved the conditions where it is. It was picking up.
Okay. What happens after it's developed? It will still be monitored by anybody or?
The wells will be removed.
Reminished parts. Okay. Anyone else have any? All right. Anyone in the audience, if you would like to come forward, state your name and address. You have any questions or comments? I'll give you guys a couple of minutes. I'll let you open it up to the Zoom.
Hello?
Thank you, everyone, for being patient while we try to give everybody an equal opportunity.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, I'm Margaret Quinn. Yes, Margaret Quinn, Euclid Township. I have a question. How long, when you are approved, will it take to remediate the soil before you start to?
Good. We have, we laid that out in, in previous correspondence, but from, it's all a question of the, the timing of it, but when, from when we commence the site work, the actual cleanup, you know, you know, obviously there's initial perimeter controls and other things you have to do to stabilize the site and protect against any water, any, anything getting offsite. When we actually started remediation, the physical remediation process of the soil, about three to four months. At, you know, max, we had good conditions. It could be a little bit sooner. If, if not, it may be long. But that's a pretty good estimate based on the amount that we have to get out, the limited amount.
So that's the work itself.
And that's the physical.
The approval process after the facts, right, from the DEP to come back and then approve?
Well, DP doesn't really come back. They just, they, our consultants will file the report and the DP will rely on that report as issuing, then issuing the part two.
That's, that's what I meant though. So how long does that?
That's 90. They have 90 days from. Sixty? Sixty days from when we submit the report.
Okay.
And the report obviously will be submitted the minute we get the go-ahead from our consultants and the report will be ready to go and they just need to fill in the, you know, the last.
Three to four months to do the work and another two months to get the approval.
Right. So we would continue with the, right, we would continue with the site work and then within 60 days, we would get that confirmation from them at the.
I mean, we, we threw in a couple of weeks, you know, three weeks for our consultant to get their report together before they submit to DEP, but yes.
Yeah. I'll just stay.
Okay, so four months to remediate, then 60 days after that, and then how long to build the community? How long will that take?
Uh, well, that's, uh, so typically without the environmental cleanup, typically this will be done in phases. So the first section would probably be paved typically in about four to six months. And then the answer to that is really up to the market and, and sales, you know, after we got through substantially, selling substantially the first phase of the job is when we would then start the second phase so that it would be a seamless work. But so basically two phases.
What, what do you think the projection is based on? If, if the market sees the way that?
I think, uh, from the moment they open for, the sales start opening, I would think sellout within two years conservatively. That's how, how about construction? Construction would take four to six months to pave the first section.
Correct.
And then building a model two to three months.
Okay.
So within nine to 10 months, they're selling. Now they've already prepared and have people ready to go. And so you typically get a flurry of sales the minute they open the model.
Yep.
So hopefully. So the entire span should take approximately two to three years. Um, I think a two-year sellout from the starting of, of sales. So, so maybe two and a half to three years. If you're starting, start to finish, and then you have the dedication work that happens after the last homes are built. So. Sorry, it's a little, it depends on what you're asking.
I was just trying to clarify what I think she was asking. That's all. So.
Okay.
I have a question. Is phase one, the areas in the southwest of the pipeline, and phase two to the northeast, are that correct?
It's, that's generally correct for how we would do it. Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think we would do more than two phases, given the size of this project. Just wouldn't make sense.
Just general arrangement of the work.
Yeah, we come off the main road and then, you know, the pipeline is a pretty good demarcation for, for first phase.
I have another question. When you're cleaning up the site and, you know, trucks are going up and down Worthington Road, will that be cleaned by you so that people don't pick up that debris on their tires, put them in their garage and then take them into their house? Or how are you going to work cleaning up, you know, anything that you spill?
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll have, part of the NPDS permit requires certain measures to be put in place regardless of whether it, there's an environmental condition or not. Stone entranceways will be put in, tire scrubbers to make sure that the trucks run over them to get, to loosen all, most of the debris that comes that's stuck in the tires. I'm just, just also just want to make sure, understand that the truck wheels won't be in the area that we're cleaning, you know, we're removing it. There's a, you know, hollow backhoe that will be moving into picket. So the truck wheels will just be on regular, the regular soil of the site. So just understand what you're saying there, that there won't be, it's not like there's going to be contamination in the tires and then running through the site and then onto the road. It's just regular dirt from the site.
I, I have a question. Hello?
It's a different person?
Yeah.
Yeah. My, my name is Kathy Cook. I live in Rhonda and I take exception with the fact that you have given adequate public notification. The only reason I knew about this meeting was Alex Manning sent out an email and there was nothing in our Rhonda roster. And I know a lot of people would like to know about this project, especially the people that are very adjacent to the project. So I think you really need to have a meeting with the Rhonda HOA and it should be in the Rhonda roster. That's, that, that is a must. And it's also across the street. There is another development. I know somebody there. She had no idea there was a meeting.
I don't know if that's directed to me or the township.
That would be the township.
It's public, but you really need to reach out a little bit better.
Okay. What's your grading balance sheet? You're not bringing in dirt, are you? Okay. So the only trucks that are technically moving offsite will just be the ones that are all floating, impacted soil.
And we managed it so that, so we would have soil left over to fill in the areas when we remediate and haul away.
Okay. Am I able to speak now? Just checking.
Speak your name.
Okay, this is Ben Greisler, Rhonda resident. So a couple of questions and comments. So my understanding of the process here in Euclid Township is that currently you would need to have the remediation completed before you can even submit your plans, you know, for the development. And I understand that you wish to get a waiver for that. So you can have your plans available. So you can get your banking and finances in, in shape. Understood. The question is though, when do you plan on having any kind of public comment on the plans? Because so far you've been pretty seemingly that the plans that you have now are the ones that are, that the ones you're going to be using, but you really haven't had the opportunity for a public comment to hear from the neighbors because you officially haven't gone into the planning stage to get the okay for it. You, that's, that seems to be what's going on. Now, if we are going to give a waiver as a township, what would be the timing for public comment for the plans themselves? Because there are certainly issues that the neighborhoods around this 72 homes have with your current plans.
Yeah, that would be, uh.
For, for one thing, I believe that all, all the meetings are posted in the Daily Local and on the, no, not on, they are on at least the Township website.
They're, they're in the Daily Local and this would be the appropriate time to be making public comment on these plans as work with the Planning Commission and ultimately the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, but understand as, as a resident here, we have, we shouldn't even be in the planning portion unless you grant a waiver. And then once you grant a waiver, then we could potentially be in the planning portion. So right now we've been more concerned with the, how wise this project is to begin with. Forget whether or not we like the plans or not.
I'm just, I mean, just, I mean, it's more of a township, but it's also, I guess, right. But we've been, I mean, we've been having discussions about this plan and, and it's been, we've gone through four or five comment reviews and public discussions. We had even two years ago, we had discussions about the plan that we've incorporated into the plan. So I mean, there's, there's, there's been open discussion about with anybody that's wanted to over the last two plus years. So.
Yeah. And from a procedural standpoint, and I certainly defer to the solicitor too, but in order to ask from a waiver for a waiver from subdivision and land development, you have to have something pending in front of the township in order to do so. That's, that's what we've had pending in front of the township for the past two plus years.
And, and I understand that. And I believe that the township has been more than accommodating and, and helping you out and guide things and pointing out the fact that you shouldn't be putting driveways through wetlands. So, you know, I think the township has been doing a great job working with you. But I think that hidden in all of the environmental concerns is the fact that the neighbors still have concerns about this. And we need to have a clear understanding that we can bring up these concerns, not piecemeal, but okay, fine. You're ready to talk about these plans? Let's talk about the plans. There were concerns about the traffic studies because they were done pretty much in times where there really wasn't any traffic.
Well, that's actually not, I mean, that's not accurate. The, the traffic studies were done in accordance with how traffic studies are supposed to be done. We do not, you can't get away with just trying to do it on a 12 o'clock at night till three o'clock in the morning. That's.
That isn't what I'm talking about. The fact that the past two years, there has not been any standard traffic flow on any of these roads. So, so any traffic test that has been done is questionable.
I, I can answer that question. So PennDOT actually came up with criteria that traffic engineers were required to use during the pandemic, which does take into account the fact that there wouldn't have been the same level of traffic on the roads. There's actually a formula they use to sort of extrapolate that. And that was actually reviewed and approved by the Township's traffic engineer as well. We do have a clean traffic review letter. But I will note that's all based on PennDOT criteria. So it's not something that was developed either by our traffic consultant or the Township's traffic consultant. They were adhering to what was in place at that time. Based on my own personal experience and other applications and not to do with this, I'm saying we followed exactly what was going on, but we've actually on a couple of projects I have, we've gone back out and done counts since they've now lifted that. PennDOT said as of the fall, forget it, go back to whatever the normal is today. That's now the new normal. And we've actually, I've actually had a couple of projects where the traffic counts and our extrapolation and proposed, you know, future impacts ended up being less based on current conditions than the formula that was required to be used during the pandemic. So I feel very confident that we have done the traffic study appropriately for this project.
Now you followed the rules. I, I understand that.
And I, I just want to clarify that I know we've been focusing on environmental issues at, at these meetings, but this is the appropriate time to be making comments on all aspects of the development plan.
As, as they have been for the last two years, every, at every public meeting that we've been at. So, you know, this, this discussion has been a sort of concurrent discussion throughout this entire process. So.
It seems to me that there's just some slight understanding from the caller that, a misunderstanding from the caller that, that the applicant has, has provided plans and the, the Township's consultants have reviewed all these plans for compliance with all our ordinances, including the environmental ordinance. And that's how we come up with these, at these meetings to ask questions about the, the issues that were raised by our consultants. But these plans have been thoroughly reviewed, thoroughly reviewed for compliance with all township ordinances.
Yeah.
That's the ordinances. It doesn't necessarily reflect the desires of the neighbors.
Right. I'm just saying that for the last two years, the neighbors have had input and have actually given us input and we've made plan changes based on that input. So there has been community input.
Most of the changes from my understanding have been based on the recommendations of the township. Like, don't put a driveway through wetlands, that type of thing.
Well, actually that was also in coordination with residents in that area. So.
Raised concerns at the time.
I disagree with that statement. It was not just the township. It was a discussion, joint discussion by all parties.
And that's what this meeting is about tonight, to discuss the preliminary plans.
Okay. So another concern that I have is, if I heard you right, I may have heard you wrong. So, so my apologies if I did. That once the construction is done, there will be no more monitoring for the groundwater or. for the groundwater or anything in the area. Is that correct?
That the right, the approval, the D P approval has satisfied the D P with regard to the groundwater. That, you know, we and the testing, just, you know, testing's been going on for decades. So it's not just the last two years. It's So this is a process that's been going on for decades. We closed it out with the D P permit and they've been satisfied that we've done everything we need to do to satisfy getting an act, the act two clearance.
So so are we to take that as saying that once you're done your remediation, there is no more concerns for any environmental contaminants in that area?
As far as we've got the D P, they've sat, they've been satisfied that with regard to the groundwater. That's correct.
You went with natural attenuation, right? So natural attenuation means that over time it's just going to dissolve out. I believe they did stream surveys that it wasn't daylighting. So the D P approves natural attenuation, then it'll it'll dissolve over time. So.
Okay, so what one last thing, I'll let other people talk. Will you be doing it? Right now, the property is separated from at least the Rhonda properties with a strip of woods. Are you planning on clear cutting that? Are you planning on leaving it? Are you planning on doing anything else to provide privacy between the two communities?
I mean, there's very minimal the clear cutting, absolutely not. I mean, is there always some clearing? But any of the clearing has been approved by the conservation district as part of our M P D S permit. Will there be a buffer still? Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a buffer. There's no, we're not just knocking down trees. I'm not in the business of just knocking down trees haphazardly. So the minimal trees that we're knocking down are are consistent with the development and and the M P D S permit that we received.
And there are also landscaping requirements in the township ordinances that we were required to meet. It's not currently on the screen, but there is a detailed plan. There is a detailed landscaping plan that is part of the plan set.
And Allison and Tom, I, since this plan has been submitted, the township has brought on a landscape architect. And I would suggest that the final plan be reviewed by him as well. That way we are sure that it's everything that's been planted is what's supposed to be there and all in all ordinances. So.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll yield to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Okay, so just for callers on this call, I'm going to work our way down here. So I will ask you to unmute and then that will be your time to speak. So I'm going to go with John Zeparella here.
Hey, can you hear me? Hey, so my question is in regards like the entrance of Penburg Court, you had mentioned. I know there was talks like and the entrance to Century Oaks and you had talked to those residents like how like was the reason that that was changed? I was in the previous meeting, but was the reason that was changed because of the residence concern?
I think the answer to that, what you want, I think the answer to that was resident concern and township. The township asked us to relocate it and we obliged.
I mean, sure, it has less of an impact from a natural features perspective.
Yeah, we're fully supportive of it, but the the comment, the comment from the township and residents was to ask us to move it. And that's, that's what necessit, or not necessarily, that's what.
The residents of Century Oaks you're referring to?
I don't know specifically who I, I don't know specifically who it was. It was years ago. So I don't know the exact people, but I assume it would be people that were in that area.
Correct. So I live in Rhonda in Penburg Court, which is right across from that entrance. Are there any other options? Like, do you, is it necessary to have two entrances?
Yes, by the the terms of the township's requirements, it is necessary to have two access points. We had discussed emergency access, but the the preference has been voiced from a, you know, fire safety perspective that we do provide two full access points.
Couldn't you have a fire access road as a secondary entrance off of Worthington?
Well, I think the the idea is to have is in the eventuality that that road, that there's, there's a blockage at that road. We have two entrances at the same spot. It defeats the purpose of of having it. So the township is looking to have a separate access in the unlikely event that the Worthington Road access is impassable. So. But you know, just just to state that the the main entrance, the marketing entrance and the main entrance will be off the Worthington Road. And the way the road design is set up, that really will be the the main thoroughfare in and out of the community.
So I had a second question. The houses that are right above that entrance are currently in a wooded area and Ben had mentioned like if I'm taking this plan per scale, it looks like there's maybe approximately basically with the road, maybe only 30 feet from the road to the back to these lots. So that essentially would wipe out all the wood line there without seeing the additional plans. But so are you planning on putting like two inch trees in place of a wood line?
Yeah. Well, the clearing will be just for the lots. There won't be any clearing beyond the lot bound, the lot lines and the boundaries that you see.
So all the trees that are above that entrance are going to remain in place and all the trees that are behind those houses, you're saying will remain?
Yeah, that are not lots, that are not part of lots. Yes.
Okay, so when we had seen like all the test holes for the pits for the contamination, I noticed I have a background in soil remediation and I noticed that there was very little test holes in the wooded area where those houses are. So correct me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't you be excavating for all the foundations of those houses? Wouldn't you be digging in that area? Because it's the it's the lowest point of the property.
I don't, I mean, I can just tell you judging by my, you know, my invoices that we did an exhaustive exhaustive amount. And I don't mean that flippantly, I mean exhaustive amount of testing. There was testing also remember over the last 20 years in attempts to remediate the property. And there was testing done in those woods. I specifically know that. And we took direction from our third party environmental consultants as to any additional test holes. They wanted us to dig based on the results of their research materials from the history of the site and the test additional test holes that we dug throughout the site.
So even the plan you're just showing now shows new trees where you said trees would remain.
That's additional trees.
Okay, so you're saying that those are like they're putting trees up against the wood line there?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, just in regards like you did do an extensive amount of test holes. I just noticed in that wooded area, which again is the lowest point of the property where if there was contamination going into, you know, the areas, it would definitely be hitting, you know, going downhill, if you will. There was only a limited amount of test holes in the wooded area where all those homes are.
I don't, I mean, I don't know if you, I don't, I mean, they're out there a lot. I don't know if that's, I can't confirm.
I'm not, I'm not debating the fact of how how many holes were done. I'm just saying the location of them seemed to be limited in that area.
All the all the test holes were based off of historical data and information and topographic maps and thousands and thousands of pages of reports based on this property as to the places where contamination occurred. And so now we did anytime, anytime our environmental consultant said, I think maybe we should do a test pit here. I said, yes. I never once.
You mentioned like you're going to have an independent consultant like monitor like during the remediation and also like dust control. Is that someone that is a third party? Is that someone the township chooses in a bruiser or someone that the contractor or yourself is choosing?
No, it's a very well respected. I don't know if they're national, but they're incredibly well respected company that is not in the business of you know, going out of business by not doing what the appropriate things to do to to make sure sites cleaned appropriately. So they're, they're, they're as committed as anybody would need to be because they have.
Do you know who that is? Would you mind sharing that information?
Sure, GTA, Geo-Technical Associates.
The other thing I would mention is that if you're interested in seeing, you know, where the actual, the testing was done, we did submit a copy of the remediation remedial plan, cleanup plan to the township. It's a very large document, but it's on the website. If you would want to take a look at that.
I went through a few hundred pages of it. Yes.
So you got first, you got past the introduction.
Correct, yes. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Aaron, can you hear us?
I can. Can you guys hear me? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make a comment. I don't have a question. I live in Pine Creek Valley, which is just behind Woodlark Farm. And I just want to point out that many of the residents here, I can only speak for myself, but it's just really disappointing the overdevelopment of this township in the last 10 to 10 years. My kids ride their bikes in Rhonda on Worthington. It's just going to be, it's just going to limit the it's just terrible. I mean, it's a nice, beautiful, open space. I think someone earlier said it was an eyesore. We don't see it that way. It's one of the only open spaces around here left anymore. There's traffic everywhere. Just wanted to make a comment and put it out there. I feel like the quality of the of the residents life here is like being compromised for financial gain. Just a comment. Thank you.
John?
John, can you hear us? We cannot hear you.
Hey, let's try this. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
There we go.
All right. Sorry about that. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I am Sean Buckley. I'm a resident of Euclid Township. I had three and I hope they're quick questions, three quick questions. The first one was and I apologize if this has been asked before, but you know, I've been very appreciative of the percentage of roads within the township that have sidewalks. And I was wondering, does this plan include sidewalks along Worthington? And I guess if not, then why not?
Yes, it does.
Fantastic. Question one down. Thank you. All right.
Yeah, I'm Australian.
Excellent. Second question. Yeah, I guess as we consider, maybe this is a question more for the board, but as we, as we consider this waiver that's being requested, can you speak to what factors are being considered when deciding whether to give special treatment?
Yeah, the just he's asking what considerations are being given to the request for modification. Just be clear that it's not a waiver we're asking for. It's a modification of the of the timing. It's not a waiver. But I don't mean to split hairs, but I appreciate it. What was this?
I think the, I think the purpose of this, for this meeting, though, we're calling it a waiver. I think we've decided that at the last. So but we'll make that, we'll make that clear on on a little bit clearer later.
Purpose of what? I think he's looking, wants to know the criteria you're using to make your decision about whether to give us the whatever, the timing, whatever, whatever we're calling it.
That's exactly right.
I can see for, I mean, the reason we're asking for it and asking for the consideration is that this property is contaminated, has been contaminated for decades. There's an opportunity for that to be rectified and to have it become a clean site. And then to be able to then develop it as it was zoned by the by the township as a by right plan, which has all along been what it's been, it's been zoned for a single family use. And that's exactly what we're doing. So I guess it's to clean it up and then to develop it as the township has had it in their plans as for this piece property to be developed.
So, yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I think that's that's helpful context. But as I think about, you know, these, these rules are here for a reason, right? And that's, that's why I was asking of the the township specifically. For the for how they'll be thinking about this. Is it the same reasons?
Leave it with like industrial waste and stuff. And they're just going to start digging it up and building houses on there.
Well, why would you be allowed to do that?
They they keep saying we got the permit for this. We've had disinspected. It seems like they've somehow.
I don't know. Sorry about that.
I think he's maybe asking why we would give them the either waiver or modification in allowing them to do the concurrent. So remediation and build either underground. Why? How would we make that decision?
That's exactly what I'm asking. Thank you.
And that just goes back to his answer earlier. We want to, we want to see the property cleaned up. And we want to see it developed properly.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just wanted to hear it from you. Thank you.
No problem. That was, yeah, we're just trying to do things the right way. The property has been contaminated for many years and it would be good to have it off our off our books of being a problem.
Okay, I appreciate it. And then I'll make one comment real quick at the end. And again, I appreciate everyone's time. So and this is a very selfish comment, but you know, I live in Wilmington, Worthington, I'm directly across the road from where this new entrance will be. I mean, I'm right on that corner. So I assume through the remediation and development and then actual, you know, having new residents there is my, my, my life is going to change significantly. It's going to get an awful lot louder. And it's probably going to be very difficult for my young children, but I appreciate there's nothing that can be done here. I'm just making that comment.
All right, Margaret, I'm going to jump just to residents that haven't had a chance to ask a question yet and we'll come back to you. Okay. I'm going to move to Lindsay Hartman.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lindsay Hartman. I am a resident of Rhonda and my concern actually is also, well, I have several concerns, but one being the noise. Having a child with special needs, I feel like adding an entrance that goes right into a community the way that the second entrance is proposed is really not very considerate of other neighbors who are living nearby. And my second concern is also with the remediation about any toxins that would be released into the air. I can speak, I have a child with a central IV line who can become septic with any type of infection. So I really would like to know as you're building, who's going to be monitoring air quality and things like that.
Well, just in terms of the, once once the soil has been remediated off the site, the site will be a clean site as any other site would be. So there would be no contaminants to to go airborne after that initial phase of the work. And that's why we want to get it done very quickly and and as part of this process. So I understand what you're saying, but there won't be any monitoring once it's all gone because it will all be gone. There won't be any, any contaminants on the site. We're not storing any contaminants. It's all completely going off.
Okay. And what can we expect as far as the noise from the decontamination process?
It is, it is trucks and a backup. It literally be lining up trucks and backup will be filling them and then the truck will be leaving and as quickly as we can load them up, we'll get them out of there. And as quick as we can get this process done, we want to do it. So that's why we gave that timeframe and we, believe me, we want to get it done as quickly and expeditiously as possible with making sure that we obviously get all of it there. That's why our consultants will be on site to make sure.
And also just to clarify, the the construction entrance for the project for that remediation will be from Worthington. There will be no truck traffic going through Rhonda for for that aspect.
Oh, yes. Good point. Yeah, all the trucks.
And also the township has noise ordinances, right? That need to be followed. Can we just real quick just state what they are so that everybody is aware what the noise ordinances are?
Construction can begin, I believe it's 7:00 AM during the week until half hour after dusk or 7:00 PM, whichever is earlier and no construction on Sundays and holidays.
Okay, thank you.
Just to, just to reiterate on her question is the, that even during construction, not even during remediation, everything will come in off of Worthington Road. You're not going to have vehicles coming. Yeah, you're able to direct the builders. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. To be a me. Right. And the same thing for that, that that.
Right. And the same thing for that, that that road is not really gonna be that convenient for people to use. Hopefully, whoever's listening, it would be, it's just as easy to come out on Worthington than to get, come through Rhonda. I do believe there might be a couple of people that it might be easier for, but not the maj, not the majority.
It should be easier, because I think it was discussed about putting a merge lane in, right?
Turning lane.
Yes.
Turning lane. As part of that thing, part of that township has asked us to do, and that's right, we've agreed to do as part of the approval.
Right. Okay, we're gonna move to Peter Charnah.
Okay, thanks. Hi, this is Peter Charnah. I'm a resident of Woodlark Farm, so I'm right across the street. And I have two questions. One is for the developer, which is, what is the trail plan and whether the trails involved are for township residents, or whether they're for the residents of the development only? And I have a second question after that.
The answer to the first question is the trail system is gonna be put in as part of our timing between preliminary and final approval. It was a condition that was asked for as part of preliminary approval, the last letter, not the last letter, but incorporated in the last letter, that we will incorporate along with the turning lane in between preliminary and final approval.
I think you should clarify. You mean, it's not shown on the plan that's on the screen, but we'd be adding it to the plan.
Yeah, it's not on the plan currently. Will be added.
And then it would be constructed. It would almost mean it sound like you're going to be installing it on a site.
I'm sorry.
That's why I wanted to clarify. It's not shown on the screen, but there is a, there's a trail sketch that,
has it been worked out?
It was requested, and we will be incorporating that into the plan set.
And it's already been, it's already been worked through with the township engineer as to where it's gonna go. So it's just a matter of taking a couple of minutes to put it on the plan.
And it's accessible to the public. It's not just for the community, or that's what he was asking?
I, I mean, the, well, I guess the question for the township is one, is they taking dedication of the roads? Because the, the mode and access point for it would be through the community, which is either gonna have dedicated roads and which will have public access or not. So I guess that's really, not to throw it back, but it's kind of a question that we need to have the township answer for us.
I think that's something we've thought between now and final plan.
Okay, township owns the answer, but it's not decided yet. And the second question is more for the township, I think, which is when I go to the township website on the proposed subdivision land developments page and click on the Gray Farm subdivision link to get the document. I'm getting a multi-page document, this is a 30-page PDF, whose first page is dated almost two years ago, April 2020. And so I'm skeptical that I'm looking at the latest and greatest. I, I mean, I know I've seen more recent documents like the 1,000-page environmental report, but in terms of actual plan development, I'm not sure that I'm seeing the right thing.
The plan set?
Yeah, the plan set was last revised February 2nd, 2022.
Look, you might see the original date, and then you gotta look to see the, the last update, the last time it was modified.
Yeah, so on the title block, there's a revision date that would be of it. Yeah.
Their most recent plan is up, and if it's not, we'll make sure that's up tomorrow.
It really hasn't changed, you know? Well, since the original, yes.
Yes, the original, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking, it just says preliminary subdivision plan of Gray Farm, and I don't see anything dated more recently than 2020, but I'm skimming it fast. So I could be missing something, but it, I'll check again tomorrow. But obviously, you know, for to make comments on, on the plan, we should be seeing the plan as it's, as it now stands. That's it. I'm out of questions, I think.
All right, and we're gonna go back to Mark Quinn, who's been very patient.
Yes, my last question is probably a conclusion, too. Can you just state the waiver that they're asking for?
Do you want the exact language or just?
Yeah, the exact language.
Hang on a second, we're getting it.
Thank you.
So the, it's a partial waiver from section 511 and section 406.1.86 of the subdivision and land development ordinance in order to allow remediation and environmental contamination and/or hazardous materials or waste to occur concurrently with site development activities upon approval of subdivision and land development plans and issuance of an NPDS permit. Applicant is proposing to complete remediation in accordance with sections 511 and section 406.1.86 of the subdivision and land development ordinance in accordance with the enclosed proposal, and that is the site development plan and remediation steps that I, it's a, it's a document dated February 23rd, 2022, which I referenced at the beginning of the meeting. It has nine steps in it, rather than me reading all of them. But it's essentially what we've talked about at the various meetings.
So what does that mean? You want to remediate, build, remediate, build?
No, no, we're gonna, the first thing, what we're asking for is that we get a plan that we can record, and then we record to get full approval, we record the plan, and, and that's the, that's what we're asking for the modification for, is to be able to record the plan as a timing, as a timing element, just record the plan and then do the remediation, all of the remediation immediately upfront, and then the remediation is done forever and, and just normal site development and home building will continue from that point.
And then our NPDS permit, the NPDS permit for the project has a sequence of construction. And so what Tom described, that's the sequence of construction on the ENS plans and the, that are part of this plant set. Or I should say erosion and sedimentation control, because I realize I was using an acronym that I probably wouldn't know what I meant.
And why are you asking for a waiver? Why, why aren't you following the law? What's the hang up there?
So the reason we're asking for a timing modification or waiver is because we are gonna be removing soil from the site, opening up the trenches where the contamination occurred. And it's much more prudent when you start doing that to complete it. And we have dirt from the site that we are then going to fill in where the contamination was removed. And it would just not be best practices to open the site, then stop, go through the approval process with the township, and then go back and start again. It's just, you know, we talked about dust and all those types of things. I don't think anybody wants to have a, a delay that, an open, open site for however long it takes to then go through the approval process. So we just think it's the best, it's the best way to do it, the most prudent way to accomplish what everyone's goal ultimately is, which is to clean up a contaminated site.
So you wanna dig everything out? And then you wanna put fill in? But if you wanted to do that, they're waiving the right for it to be inspected before they put the fill in?
Absolutely not. No.
This is, this is all just about a timing of the actual plan approval. So otherwise, we would have to do that first and then request plan approval from the township. It's solely about the timing of the plan approval itself, not anything physically in the field. Everything will still be inspected appropriately. The way a land development plan works in general is that the township has the right to inspect certain things on the site as they're ongoing, and that would be occurring here just like any other development project.
Sometimes it gets, we get a little lost. I just wanna circle back to something that we talked about a lot is, this is not an attempt to do anything other than clean up this site. And there is no ulterior motive in terms of, of not cleaning up the site. People are gonna be living on this site. I'm developing the site. This is what I do. I'm not in the business of putting people into homes on a site that's not appropriate or clean. So let me just be clear and make, make that statement. The idea here is the first thing we're gonna do is completely clean this site to make it a clean site that hasn't been cleaned for decades, so that it is appropriate to then proceed to have homes built and families live in a beautiful bucolic setting.
Any additional comments, Margaret?
I still don't understand it. Still don't understand what, what they're waving, what you're waving.
The only thing we're asking for a modification for is instead of, instead of the way it's currently drafted, we would have to go and remediate the site now, and then stop and come back and get our land development approvals for the development, and then go back and do the normal site development that occurs and home building that occurs. We're just asking to do the remediation of the contaminated soil at the same time, or right before we then continue with normal site development of the site. How's that?
How long would it take you to get it approved after you got all the stuff out of there?
Who knows? I don't control the approval process.
Is it gonna be approved through the DEP or the EPA or the township?
EP has already approved our cleanup plan, and the NPDS has already given us a, a permit. So two separate agencies with oversight of the contamination and erosion control have approved it.
And who, who's are you missing?
Nobody. It's the township. Township. We're here tonight.
Okay. It's remediated, it's remediated, make sure it's all gone. The report.
Well, the report is submitted. Report is submitted, but that's just more of a, they're not gonna come out, and in fact, they're gonna rely on the report of the consultant. And if everything is, demonstrates what they would tell us it would be, because we wouldn't submit the report without it, they have 60 days to then.
60 days. And I think that's a little bit of what she's asking, is that normally it would go in sequence, right? And instead, it's going concurrent.
Well, no, it's all going in sequence. It's just that we're gonna continue with
underground.
the underground site work after we have completely remediated it while we're waiting for the final sort of administrative sign-off from the DEP.
Right. I think that's what she was asking.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
That's what I was asking. Thank you.
There we go.
I was actually expecting to hear a different answer, so I just wanna make sure I get clarification. I thought part of the problem was financial. You needed a plan in order to get finances. You can't really do the cleanup until you understand you have the finances in place. If it doesn't, okay. I didn't hear that in your answer. You talked about timing and not having to wait, but there's another part of this, right? Which is also, in order to get the finances, in order to do it, you need to know that you've got a plan that'll be approved, right? So can you just talk to that? Because I didn't hear that in your answer. And I was surprised.
That, I mean, that's a component of it. But I mean, it's, it's, so it's two levels, right? It's the most, the number one level is what's the best way to clean up the site? And, and in a, in a way that would be consistent with best practices. And that's sort of the overriding reason we're looking to, to do it in this manner. In order to get a site, and then separately, in order to get a site like this cleaned up, you're not gonna be able, nobody is gonna, is gonna put out the millions of dollars to clean up a site without knowing that this is then gonna be a project. And that includes financing, includes having the approvals. So that's two separate components of the, of it. So we've, I think we've spoken about that.
Well, that's why I was, I was expecting that to be your answer, and when it wasn't, I was surprised.
I think, I think Tom was trying to give her the more like physical, on-the-ground answer. So, but yes, it's both parts of it.
Nobody ever cares about my, my financial, right? I don't ever raise that, because nobody cares. They're not concerned with my, yeah, so. But yeah, that's it.
Yes. And both, and both of those pieces are referenced in the waiver letter that I was reading the waiver from.
Right. Okay, we're gonna go back to Peter Charnah.
Yeah, so it's really the same topic. I wanna kind of articulate what I think my understanding is, but I couch that by saying, I'm really frustrated by the lack of plain English as to, you know, what the developer is really trying to achieve with the waiver. And from what I understand, by the book, you'd have to spend the money to do the remediation and only then go back to the township and file your plan. And that opens up a risk that township would say no to the development after you've committed whatever hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars to clean up the land. And fundamentally, that's the main thing that the waiver is to protect you from, is to sort of bundle together the commitment to remediate and the commitment to allow the development. And secondarily, the, yeah, once you've torn up the ground, it would be smart to put the pipes in before you cover it up again, just to have to uncover it. And it's, to me, it's frustrating that you, you know, you, it's taken, like, we have to piece it together, and the previous questioner is, you know, potentially left confused because, and I'd like for both the township and the developer to answer that, it sounds like we're saying, you know, none of the certifications and environmental checks are being bypassed as a function of the waiver. The only thing that's, that we're being asked to do is for the township to say yes earlier in the schedule than is warranted by the ordinance, so that you can commit to the effort to remediate, knowing that the township has already said yes to the development, whereas ordinance requires those to be sequential. Is that accurate or not accurate?
Yes. Yeah, that's, that was great.
I, I, I should bring you to the next meeting.
But, you know, I mean, this, I mean.
I have an hourly rate.
We've obviously tried, we've been talking about this a lot, a lot of meetings. I think we've all done, yeah, both sides a pretty good job of doing our best to lay it out as simply as possible. And so there's no, you know, we're not trying to use fancy words. I mean, it's, it's really, you know, we try to make this more difficult than it is. Really, you, you summarize it very well. There's nothing to add to that, so.
Yep. And, John?
I just wanna, I wanna thank the board for also bringing that up. I noticed that in the last meeting, that's one of the big constraints with this, getting this modification or waiver, if you will, was that they would not be able to get financing if they followed the actual way that ordinance is written to do the remediation prior to getting final approval. And I think that, you know, without, maybe other people can or can articulate that, but it's, it's, it's something where like, that's removing a layer of protection, because you do have a plan with the DEP, but during the remediation, if there was something else found or something was not, did not go according to plan, which often happens in the construction, that removes that layer for the township and the residents to then make changes. And you already have what you wanted with this financing. So I really don't see the benefit of a waiver or modification from the township or residence point of view, besides to make sure that you're using the bank's money to bankroll this. And I certainly understand the reduction in costs in construction and doing things concurrently, but there's no benefit to the residents or the township in doing that, nor it was mentioned, this is a land recycling situation. So if nothing was done to the land at all, and it was not touched or disturbed, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would eventually, over time, it would not be a environmental, it's been monitored, you already mentioned this, so it's been monitored to be on its way to being safer every day, not being touched. So why do anything with it?
So that's, that's, that comment was regarding the groundwater. The contaminants that are in that ground now will never be gone until we remove them. The, the nature of those solids that are in the soil 16 inches.
But there's, there's safe levels of them, correct?
No, they're not. No.
That's why. There's not. If they're covered, are they airborne?
Yeah, if they're uncovered, they could be airborne.
No, if they're uncovered, they could be airborne. If they're not uncovered, is it a threat?
It's not that, they're not that deep.
Is it a threat if they're not uncovered?
I can't answer that.
Today, well, I'm, I'm, that's, that's the question, because the township made a comment that they wanna get this cleaned up. Currently, if nothing was done with that and it remained a farm, there would be no threat. So that's what I'm bringing up.
Why would anybody wanna live next door?
I live right next door, and I love it. So I guess I could answer that question directly.
Okay.
I mean, I just wanna also clarify on an earlier point you made. While we would have financing in place, part of what our sequence is talking about here, the developer would be continuing to proceed at his own risk to do underground improvements. But in order to sell a house and actually, you know, build the project, he will need to get an act two clearance. So if there is something else that comes up while he is in the process of doing this, he will have to address that in order to move forward. Conversely, for some reason, it's decided that it could never be fully remediated. As I said, that's at his risk, but there will be financial security in place and funds in place to then stabilize the site at that point in time.
Correct. And if the houses don't sell and the market goes down, this could potentially be, like you said, a two, three-year timeline could turn into a four- or five-year timeline with temp stabilization in our backyard.
Well, no, the, the cleanup will already have been done initially, within that three to four month.
I'm talking about the construction conditions, because I feel like they've been like downplayed by a couple trucks coming in and out. You're talking thousand, tens of thousands of yards of soil, correct?
But the, the, the construction risk after the remediation has occurred and we're just talking about a prototypical community. There's no, there's very little risk that the community won't get built. Now, I may, I may be, you know, have to take a, you know, haircut and that's, that's on me financially, but that can be, the community will be built out. It's a beautiful location.
It's not the concern of it being built out. It's the length of time, just like when the pipeliners came in and said, we'll be in and out of here. If the housing market takes a crash, this will be an active construction site for a much longer time if those houses don't sell in three to like three years or so. But my concern is as a resident is that we'll be living in construction conditions with dust and like poorly blown straw over topsoil coming into our, our community.
Well, there, there are, I mean, the township has stabilization requirements. There's inspection requirements. We would not be allowed to leave a site in whatever worst case scenario, you know, which we all, otherwise, nobody does business if you don't take on certain, you know, the world moves on and you try to, and you, you know, you have to take certain risks. But the township has millions of dollars of security that if for some reason the site goes vacant, it has to be stabilized. It has to be back growing grass. And if it's not, they have, they can pull the financial security and do whatever they want to do the stabilization so that it's back to, you know, to grass state. So I disagree with, I disagree with your comment that it was just going to be some sort of a, you know, wind torn site with, you know.
Well, I, I work in construction sites, so I, I, I agree with what you're saying. The township does have that ability. But I encourage other people to drive through some active construction sites in areas and see what it really looked like.
I can tell you.
Because unless someone speaks up about it, you know, it's, it's going to remain with a little bit of straw on it. So, but you know, I, I just morally concerned with like the, like, like I said, like, I don't see the real benefit from a township or residents for us to waive or modify this ordinance when it's been put in place by the township for just this reason to protect us. So why are we waiving this? So you can get financial because you can, as you already mentioned, you can do the remediation and wait for your planning, but you're like, why do that? It's because it's monetary, it's a monetary reason. And that's, that's my, my only comment.
Well, I, I would take exception. I take great pride in the communities that I develop and the subs that I use to stabilize grounds and those companies. And so I can tell you that if you drove through my sites, I, I take great pride in making sure that, and the people I work with do things the right way and make sure things are to the best of our ability stabilized and in good shape, especially once the roads are down. That's obviously the initial is the hardest part is getting those roads. And I worked very hard with my subs to get those, those sites paved. And with my landscaping companies and I'm on them all the time. If there's something I see that I don't like. So I would just, I would just say that maybe some, you may have that at some sites, but not, not on my sites. I work very hard. I'm at my sites, you know, three to four times a week. It's, I actively do this. This is my, this is my job and I have to rely on my reputation for it.
Can you share those other sites that you've built that maybe community members can familiarize themselves with your reputation? And, you know, subs that you've used and if they want to do that homework themselves, they can.
Yeah, if they want to reach out to me, I'm happy to, you know, happy to go through that with them. So.
Okay. I guess reach out through the township.
My number, my number's always.
Okay. And I just want to circle back to the act two permit, just as far as John, I think brought that up, but I think that's a question that's come up before. Once you've remediated and you've submitted the paperwork, obviously you said, I'm not going to submit the paperwork if it's not done completely. But in theory, you submit the paperwork and it's denied or there's an act two permit that you still have to get. Right? And it.
There's no other permit to get. It's.
Okay. It's really a clearance at the end of the day. It's essentially saying the site.
You have remediated.
Remediated and therefore we deem this.
Correct.
To call it under act two.
Consultants are actually the gatekeepers for, they won't submit it without a D because they're not going to submit something that's not.
So speaking plainly for the community members, if the remediation isn't done to approval, the township has the right to then stop the project.
Correct.
Thank you. I think that's just the plain speaking. Yes. Okay.
I think I read before the current standard right now, you're just trying to be able to move ahead with the rest of the site work during that 90 day timeline waiting for the approval. But I think I had read something in one of the documents that the township will not issue any building permits for any of the site until the entire site is fully remediated and planned.
That's correct.
Well, and actually more than that, you know, the other thing, other site work has to be completed and roads have to be paved to, you know, to pull a building. We can submit a building permit. We won't get a building permit until a lot of other township criteria satisfy.
To clarify, just plain language, what you're seeing is.
Yes, that's right. A lot more than just remediation that's required.
Yeah.
Hello?
Hello?
Just let her know that. Hi, we can hear you.
All right. Thank you. Stuart Solomon, resident of Euclid Township. I have two main questions. The first question is, is what are the potential health risks by exposing the soil and airborne contaminant and contamination through airborne movement?
So I.
Maybe speaking to this again, because it's been brought up a couple of times. So just maybe speak to the.
Process?
Yeah, the process.
Um. And maybe this is, you, you think of it this way, but it's not like all of a sudden 50 backhoes are going to come on the site and this whole, all the contamination is going to be unearthed. We are going to be doing it in a very systematic, limited way and then moving on. So, and, and it'll be immediately going into a truck and getting off the site as quickly as it gets loaded. So we will start with, you know, it's several sections of strips and we will start and do it piecemeal and get it off. It's not like all of a sudden it's going to be open and subject to the environment. So.
And you have a third, we talked about that you'll have a third party monitoring.
Oh, yeah.
Quality. So mention that.
Yeah, we'll follow DEP protocols. You know, I think, I don't know if they're in that report, but we'll follow the typical DEP remediation protocols that have been established for a long time for sites much more contaminated than this.
And dust control we talked about.
You said, you mentioned dust control. What will those practices be?
Water trucks, you spray it, you know, depending on weather conditions. You know, again, most of the stuff we talk about dust control is going to be dust, like just regular dust. It's not going to be contaminated soil. That's going right into a truck covered and off the site. You're talking about, you know, normal dust that you would see on a dirt road that, you know, would come up.
I think, I think from a best practices standpoint or a DEP practices standpoint, there would be a water truck.
Yeah, there'll be a water truck. There'll be, they're called tire scrubbers, which are just big, huge rocks that are a stretch of road that the, the trucks will go over to shake loose all of the mud so that by the time it gets to the road, it's, it's very minimal. Do our best. We do. We take great care and there'll be consultants out there. And if they're not happy with it, they're going to tell us because and, and the township. Yeah. So it's going to be, it's going to be mine. There's nothing, nothing. It's all going in the light of day. This work is all getting done in the light of day. Literally and figuratively.
The consultants will keep an eye on things.
Okay. And then my second question was in your original submittal to the township, you had an entrance through the Century Oaks development and at that time you had 76 houses planned for that. With the change with the second access off of Pembroke, directly across from Pembroke Court, that has required you to reduce the number of houses down to 72. What would your development plan be if you were to use the entrance off of Century Oaks that was already put in at the time and the curb is already cut for it for this future development compared to going into Pembroke?
Well, I mean, that's hypothetical that we, we showed that on the plan. The township asked us and the residents asked us to move it. We were able to accommodate them. Yes, we lost lots, but again, we're trying to have a good back and forth and try to accommodate. And so that there's not really much, there's nothing else there because it's not part of the plan.
So the residents of Century Oaks mobilized and voiced their opinion and therefore there was a change. But the residents of Rhonda are voicing their opinion as well. And it just seems to be falling on deaf ears.
Well, the other consideration was the environmental, I mean, that was a major consideration was the environmental going, going through that entrance would require going across environmentally sensitive areas. So it's not just because some neighbors spoke up and then the others didn't. That was a major consideration, I think. I don't want to speak for the township, but I think, and we, we don't disagree.
Correct. It was wetland area and it was discussed that it was not appropriate to go through there.
Okay. Well, I'm voicing my opinion that I prefer that the second entrance beyond Worthington, even if it requires you to redevelop your plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Scott. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Tony Gorkan. I'm a resident of Rhonda. And my question is, having heard all of this discussion now, it's coming clearer in my mind. At the same time that I'm aware that there's sort of, as an environmentalist, there's a lot of concern in the township about shrinking and eliminating what green space we have left. My question is what specific level of plan would be put in place or approved or whatever as a result of this waiver? And would it or would it not cut off further input of the kind we just heard from Rhonda residents? In other words, if you go to a certain level of planning and it's decided, then we no longer have an opportunity to provide input on an entrance opposite Pembroke or the density of the housing or the other details of the plan. So my question is what level of plan are they asking for? And again, I'm not exactly sure what the types of plans, you know, preliminary, final, whatever. What are they asking for? And what would the impact be on further input? We've been, yes, we've been aware that this has been coming up, but the discussion hasn't gotten to the point where it's gotten this far. And I would like to see some way that we can keep open modifications to the plan that's up on there. Maybe they have to reduce the number of houses. Maybe they have to look at different planning in order to manage the nature of and preserve the nature of the Rhonda neighborhood. That's my question. Thank you.
Um.
Basically, my answer to that is that, I mean, it's, things have been going through the township for a couple of years now. With the township staff and with their engineers and stuff, we've been working on the best possible way of getting this to come together.
And to clarify, we're seeking preliminary plan approval and then there's a final plan. However, the township is, you know, sort of charged with looking at ordinances and, you know, what things make the most sense on the site. So from a density perspective and area zoning requirements, variance is a different thing. We would have to ask for, we would have to go to the zoning hearing board and ask for relief, which we don't need to do what we're proposing here. Density in terms of density, area and bulk requirements, you know, impervious coverage. We meet all of the requirements of the ordinance for that.
So the plan that you're asking for approval in advance or in an accelerated way is preliminary final?
It's just preliminary.
Just preliminary.
Yes.
And again, I would open, I understand that the township has been reviewing this. I'm a member of the EAC. We reviewed it. We've looked at a lot of this, but the vision of what we want our township life to be like is starting to modify. And I'd like to suggest that whatever process is put in place, that we stay open to what the community really wants to have happen with this, what is now a green space.
I do want to make one quick comment because I don't want there to be any confusion. And I think it's important for the public to understand because I know the, the land development process is, is, is a little difficult to understand sometimes. Although this is a preliminary plan, I think you need to understand that once a decision's made in a preliminary plan, if, unless it changes, it's not going to, it's, it's not going to be able to be changed or challenged or anything in the final plan. So now is the time that it's being decided, essentially it's being decided now.
That's exactly why I'm asking my question.
And I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Right. And, you know, just also clarify too, this plan has been incredibly thoroughly vetted by the township and is in compliance with, you know, you mentioned the community and the community, but it, you know, the, the landowner has an expectation of what the land is zoned for and what the township spoke as to what is entitled to be developed here. And that's what we're doing. We're doing what the township has zoned this property for is what we're doing. And we're actually zoning it. We're actually building less houses, significantly less houses than actually are permitted by the, by the plan, by the, by the, what the township has said should be developed here. So I would argue that actually this is, what we're doing is exactly what the township has at, has looked at this as a master plan to be developed at.
So have you, have you, have you designed it based on what the community wants it to be like? That's what I'm trying to raise as a question.
Yes, through, through the township.
Yes.
Through the township ordinances and requirements. Yes.
That's correct. Yes.
That's through the township.
That is, that is, the township is the township through the, through the people. That's what, that's the.
Yeah, that's right.
Land development, zoning and land development criteria is what applies to the property.
Correct.
At some point, there was a vote on a plan for pieces of property in this community and this property was zoned for that with input, at the time with input from all the residents at the time. And, you know, landowners are entitled to have consistency with what, what they can do with their land. And that's, that's the process that's gone, went through with this property and that we're continuing to do as we develop it.
I guess in questions like the landscape within the community, so we have the landscape architect who is new to the township. So in reviewing things like that, which some community members may be interested in understanding how the 51% or 49% of open space within the tract, how that's being developed and if the landscape architect will have input during the preliminary plan to make an impact and change that or something.
Well, we've satisfied the township ordinance in regard to landscape plan. It's a pretty, it's sort of landscape art that typically just confirms that it's in conformity with that and we've, and it's been done and an engineer, township engineer who is also, you know, has people that review that have, have said that we haven't.
And, and what, what, what staff was indicating is since the landscape architect is new, just to, you know, check species types, all of those things, you know, that would just like any other, what final plan, it would be reviewed again during final.
I think that's one question. Yeah.
Part of the species and yeah, but in terms of unit count and conformity with those species within the township ordinance, which is laid out. You know, that's already been, it's already been satisfied according to township.
I believe a lot of that stuff will go, like you say, through a final plan, not at this point, to get those approvals for those things. Do we have anybody else on Zoom, Scott?
With their hand raised. If there's anyone else that would like to make a comment on, that's joining us via Zoom, please raise your hand now.
If this waiver or whatever you want to call it is denied, will you deal with this project?
Another question.
Do you, do you have any other options?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I think that it's implying we would appeal the decision.
Will you continue with the project?
Yes.
Well, the next step, yes, would be an appeal. So the answer would be yes. But that's, that's a court process.
So you're going to take the township to court if you don't get your waiver?
Well, the, the process on how this works is the board of supervisors would either approve or deny the plan. If they deny the plan, we do have the right to appeal. That's the vehicle for continuing to pursue the plan at that point in time. That's our only option.
And then if it's still denied?
Well, if it's still denied, all. Well, if it's still denied, ultimately then it's a denied plan.
Will you continue with the project if the waiver is denied?
Well, it would be an appeal to the court of common pleas.
And if they deny it?
And to the Commonwealth Court, then it's a denied plan. So I can't pursue this plan at that point in time because there's.
Pursue the plan if it's denied in court.
Yes, that, that would be the vehicle to pursue it. Yes. I just want to clarify, if it's denied, it's not an approved plan. So I can't just go continue to use it.
A comment, we are an advisory board to try to air things out to help the supervisors make an informed decision. So let you know with that. And with that, I have someone in the back that would like to speak.
I wasn't going to speak. My name is Alexa Manning. I am our Euclid Township resident. I have been through a similar process on two different properties in New Jersey. One was asking for a conditional use variance on a three acre property to get mixed use zoning, commercial and residential. That was denied by the Board of Adjustment Planning Board in the township. So we had to pursue another option. Another was a very large family property where we were able to preserve it as open space. And that's a whole other concern that I would like to address with the township in another time. But getting back to the first property and we were cash strapped, my parents had died, I was young. My brothers and I had to make a decision. So we ended up subdividing. It was a historic property, a house built in 1710. And it was very upsetting to see, you know, what happened to that property, but it was our only option. So I'm asking you, I have sympathy for your family and what you're going through, but what other options can you think of other than maybe suing the township and taking this to court? If this doesn't go through, that sounds very threatening. We all have to make compromises in our lives. This has been a tough situation for you and I feel for you. But I think we have to dig deeply and really think about, you know, what are the other options? How does this affect every one of us in our community, our families, ourselves? So that's my public comment. I wasn't going to speak this evening, but it's bringing up some emotions. And I appreciate what everybody is, is doing, but these are, these are difficult decisions for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Scott? Nobody wants to? All right. At this time, I guess we need to decide if we want to move forward and grant the.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Let me do it.
Right.
Okay, I move that we recommend approval of the Gray Farm Preliminary Land Development Plan and grant waiver, their waiver request from section 511 and section 406 point 1.8.6. And also for in compliance, in compliance with our consultants letters, EB Walsh Review Letters dated August 11th, 2021 and February 26th, 2022. McMahon Review Letter dated August 2nd, 2021. Hydra Terra, Hydra Terra Letter dated July 13th, 2021. Michael Holmes Memo dated September 28th, 2020. Police Department Memo dated May 28th, 2020. EAC Review Letter dated November 1st, 2021. And also included in this recommendation is the DEP Act Two Approval Letter dated March 10th, 2020. 2022 and Chester County Conservation District Notification of Technical Adequacy dated March 30th, 2022. Is that all right? So move.
Anybody have any?
Down here at the bottom, there's more to be added.
And also included in addition to this recommendation, our turning lanes on Worthington, addition of trail system slash sidewalks, a totlot or other playground equipment and compliance with all state and county approvals, including DEP and CCCD. And any other conditions determined by the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, Carrie's.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate your time.
Okay. Now that was first turn of business and we, does anyone else have any business for the betterment of the planning commission? No. Announcements, April 11th, Board of Supervisor, 7:30. April 20th, Zoning Hearing Board, 7:00 PM. April 21st, Environmental Advisory Council at 7:00 PM. And with that, I'm moving to it. I have a motion to adjourn and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Who's next?
I'm in.
Tim and or, Tim and or Charlie?